Good evening. Thank all of you for being here today. It's May 16, 2023. The thought for today is the content of your character is your choice. Day by day, what you choose, what you think, what you do is who you become. Author unknown. We're going to officially call this meeting to order tonight. We have a special guest with us tonight. Pastor Gaither, if you would, please come on up, sir. Pastor Gaither is the pastor of the New Growth Missionary Baptist Church. Sir, thank you so much for being here tonight. If you would, lead us in our prayer tonight. Tell us a little bit about yourself. And afterwards, would you lead us in our pledge?
Good evening. My name is William H. Gaither, pastor of New Growth Baptist Church here in Covetown, Georgia. I'm a native of Newton County, born and raised here. And recently, after 16 years of starting the church, God has really blessed us there. And our passion is trying to bridge the gap between the elders and the youth. Amen.
Amen.
And I'm glad to be
Thank you, sir.
in the midst of our official staff. We say thank you.
Thank you.
Let us pray.
Yes, sir.
Our heavenly Father, our Maker and our Creator, we confess, first of all, Lord, to say thank you. Thank you for being great, gracious, and so good. And our Father, we thank you now for this meeting. We thank you for the gathering. We thank you in the reason in which we are gathered. Now, God, let us prepare our heart to touch and agree on the same thing, that we can make an impact in this city, this county, this state, this country, Lord, and this entire world. Our Father, we ask you to bless this staff, Lord, bless the hearers, bless the one that is sitting, listening now, Lord. We ask you to let us touch and agree on the same thing, Lord. Bless us now in all our endeavors tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and liberty for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor. I've got a small token of appreciation I want to give to you. We want to thank you so much for what you do in the community. Thank you so much. Commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please.
No more than a second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and Second, I mean, it's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and Second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify for the residents of Newton County. I know Chairman Baines, you said you were going to place the two items that were requested by the residents in regards to the investor property and as well as sidewalks in the most dense area because we've had kids who are walking the street going to school. So I wanted to make sure that's placed on record, that we're going to have a workshop regarding that because that's been a major issue for the residents in Newton County.
We're going to have a work session to talk about those issues when we get all the people on the same page. Thank you so much. All in favor? The pass is five oh. Thank you. Next is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity, we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. You may come at this time.
Good morning. I mean, good evening. It's not the morning. And they're Austin Concerned Citizens for Newton County. I'm here to address item eight, items eight and 13 on the agenda. Residents should have an opportunity to speak to unfinished business, and unfinished business items are not listed, so we don't really know what they are.
We don't have any unfinished business.
Okay. So, all right. So I don't know why it's there, but okay. It would be, okay. So, item 12. Iparametrics BOC purchasing is requesting approval of amendment one. I have some questions about why we still don't have an in-house grant writer. It looks like we could be paying up to $840,000 for grant-writing contractors, and this stated amount does not include the percentage that is given on top of that amount that each, that they receive for each grant, that grant received. Most recent data for the combined average for Atlanta grant-writing salary is $72,425 per year. That's $1,393 per week, $34.82 per hour. That's May 2023 data. So what's missing from Iparametrics is that we've not seen anything from the board, the board, as to what Newton County is actually paying them for these, their services. Initially, the board voted money's paid, and it said not to exceed $10,000 per grant, but that's really not an answer. What is the per hourly rate? Who decides how many hours are allotted on a per-project basis? The county is looking to pay close to $1 million for a $72,000-a-year position. Is this fiscal responsibility? Is that what that looks, what this looks like for Newton County? Is this transparency, fiscal transparency? So these are some of the things I'd like you to answer.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Agenda topics only. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Denise Williams, P.O. Box 1442, Covetown, Georgia. My concern is item number 11 for Steel Co. Builders. I wanted, wanted to ask the question, is this the same Steel Co. Builders in Oxford, Georgia where Chairman Baines and his partner, their dump trucks at? So, Commissioners, if this is the same company, then you all should table this and get directions from the county attorney and the county manager. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is Renee Rannie.
Who's that?
Renee Rannie. I have a, a item on the agenda.
Oh, ma'am, we, we are, we're going to come up on you in a few minutes. Give us a second and we're going to call.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. We're getting a bad storm out here and I'm having a hard time hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone's going to contact you when it's time for you, okay? Thank you. Next, the Chairman report. I have the Chamber, the President of the Chamber here, Ms. Debbie, and I have Mr. Jay Bailey, and I have Mr. Sims. Guys, if you would come on up and give us an update from the Chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Chamber and Commissioners, for the opportunity to update you on the Chamber. Good afternoon. Afternoon. My name is Jay Bailey, and I'm here today representing the Newton County Chamber of Commerce. I'm the current Chair. This is the Vice Chair, and this is our President. It's an honor to have the opportunity to provide you with an update on the progress, the activities of our organization. First and foremost, I would like to express our sincere gratitude for your ongoing support and collaboration. The Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Commissioners share a common goal, and that's to promote economic growth and improve the quality of life for the residents of Newton County. The Newton County Chamber is as strong as it's ever been at the leadership of Debbie. We have 1,617, excuse my voice today, active members representing over 20,000 employees in and around Newton County. Over the past year, our Chamber has been actively engaged in several initiatives aimed at driving economic development and fostering a thriving business environment in Newton County. We work closely with our member partners to successfully pass the 2023 SPOS, and these SPOS funds have helped address infrastructure needs and will continue to help address infrastructure needs that support economic growth. We recognize the importance of reliable transportation, broadband access, and other critical infrastructure components. Our ongoing efforts focus on ensuring that Newton County remains an attractive destination for business and residents alike. The Chamber is serving on a workforce development roundtable facilitated through the Office of Economic Development in order to help meet the workforce needs of our business community and building our local workforce pipeline. Newton County boasts rich cultural heritage, scenic landscapes, and a vibrant community. The Chamber has actively promoted tourism and initiatives to attract visitors and generate food, I'm, I'm sorry, generate revenue for local businesses. We relaunched the Hollywood of the South brand, encouraging our members to use the trademark to help grow their businesses. So looking ahead, the Chamber of Commerce remains committed to advancing our mission and contributing to the prosperity of Newton County. And in closing, on behalf of the Newton County Chamber, Board of Directors, and our members, we would like to welcome our new county manager, Mr. Harold Cooper. There will always be noise, but as you know, just keep your head down and work hard for the residents of Newton County, and we, the Chamber, will be right beside you. We will continue to collaborate with local stakeholders, seek opportunities for growth and innovation that promote a thriving business community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With that being said, that's, I want to take this opportunity to, to welcome Mr. Cooper to this team. We're looking for great things from you, and we're excited about you being here. So welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With that said, it's time to hear from Mr. Cooper. Chairman's report.
Thank you again.
I mean, the county manager's report, I'm sorry.
I'm going to give an oral report, and it's going to be threefold. First and foremost, I want to thank this distinguished board and the community for granting me this opportunity. In reference to the report, I had the opportunity to do some employee engagement initiatives, first being with the department heads. I had the opportunity to meet with all department heads during my seven days here, and I posed five fundamental questions. What were the hot-button issues within your department? What level of support you need from me as the county manager? What is your current team dynamic in terms of positions and vacancies? What is your departmental goal for FY '24, and what level of support you would need from the county manager? I got a lot of good feedback from them, and I told them that we're going to operate off the three P principle, that is, people, purpose, and processes. The work that we do is centered around the people of this community, the 117,000-plus citizens that make up Newton County. So our purpose is optimum service delivery, a synonym phrase for optimum, most favorable. We don't just want to provide you all with services. We want to provide you all with services that is of great nature and that you all will have customer satisfaction in reference to that service. Lastly, processes. I'm going to take the next couple days, weeks, and months to look at our processes as it relates to our service delivery. If we need to tweak them, we will. If we need to make robust changes, we will, because ultimately, we have to look at our service delivery to our greatest asset of this community, the people. I had the opportunity to meet with the directors in regards to that, and also had the opportunity to meet some of the staff, too, and they're genuinely invested in serving Newton County. So that's a great, great thumbs up to this community. Secondly, I had the opportunity to meet with the majority of the Board of Commissioners. I have some meetings scheduled this week as well, and I posed some of the same fundamental questions to the Board of Commissioners. What is your hot-button issue in your respective district? I got some honest and open feedback from those Commissioners as well, and I also asked the Commissioners, what is their focus or area of growth? Is it industrial? Is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it socio-economical? And I got some honest, candid feedback in reference to that, too. So I want to thank the Commissioners for granting me the opportunity to spend with them, and I look forward to meeting with the remaining Commissioners this week in reference to that. Lastly, I had the opportunity to meet with our constitutional officers, and while they have certain autonomies and freedoms granted to them, I wanted to let them know that I want to work in collaboration with them and be a consensus builder as it relates to Newton County and the services that they provide as well, to ensure that we have safe and free communities. So I thought those meetings went really well with the judges, the sheriff, the clerks, so on and so forth. So that was good feedback that I was, I received from them. And lastly, my role as the county manager. I want to be the bridge, and I want to be the bridge builder. I want to be the bridge between our dynamic workforce that we have here and the service delivery associated with our most valuable and important resource, the citizens, you all. So I thank you all for having passion about this community. I thank you all for being diligent in your efforts, and let's make Newton County not only a great place to live, but a great place to serve in the premier municipality in the state of Georgia. I yield back my time. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Great and appreciate you welcoming, welcoming aboard. Next is number eight, unfinished business. We don't have anything. Number nine, the consent agenda. Guys, I seek a motion, please.
Go move.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and Second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five oh. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
The next item we have on the agenda is for items for discussion and consideration. Item number 10, it's a request to approve relief of property tax penalties and fees for Ms. Renee Rannie. Our presenter is our Newton County Tax Commissioner, Mr. Marcus Jordan, along with Ms. Margaret Ms. Rannie, can you hear?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Margaret Smith. I'm the account manager for Marcus Jordan, the Tax Commissioner, and so I'm going to be here representing this tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to just open the floor for her concerns.
Ms. Rannie, if you'd like to speak, Ms. Margaret is standing for you, but Ms. Rannie, if you could speak into what your topic and issue is, and then Ms. Smith can speak to it behind you, and then we'll open it if the Commissioners have any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much for taking my request quickly. And I do have to say thank you for opening in prayer. I can't believe what I just heard, that prayer is still accepted in government, and I do appreciate that as a Newton County citizen, and thank you for representing Mr. Jordan. I, I sent a letter. Ms. Latonya said she would give it to everybody, but I'll be more than happy to read it.
She doesn't need to. I think everybody has a copy. Everybody has a copy. You want to, if you would, you want to give us an update and let everybody know what you're doing here tonight, please?
So what's going on with Ms. Rannie is that she is disputing some penalties and interest that she incurred during some delinquent taxes. So for her, she still owes for 2021, and that amount is $1,137.29. And then she has her 2022 that is also now delinquent, that is $3,507.87. So she has a total of $4,645.15 that is delinquent at this time. Now, she was requesting us to waive the penalties and interest. Is that correct, Ms. Rannie?
Yes, ma'am, just the penalties and interest, that's all.
So the penalties
And only because of the issue of inheritance.
And the amount of her penalties and interest are $729.62. So if we did waive that, then she would still have a delinquent balance of $3,915.53. So we were going to leave that up to you guys to decide.
Yep. I'm not quite sure whose district that is, but Commissioners, I seek a motion or just get some discussion going. Commissioner Henderson.
First of all, thank you for bringing this to us, and I guess it's to Marcus Assistant. I met you before. Miss Bad with Names. So if, if we were to, I mean, what would the recommendation? Do we have a recommendation? Should it be lifted of penalties and interest?
I actually don't want to give a recommendation because, I mean, at this point, she's completely, you know, she's delinquent already, so I'm not sure if waiving the penalties and interest will really help, but, I mean, you know, I would leave that up to you guys to make that decision.
Anyone else? Commissioner Cowan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the forbearance of collecting this tax. Based on her letter and what I've read in there, I think it's the right thing to do.
Is there a second? Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and Second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
So, Commissioner Cowan, could you kind of give me your take on the letter?
Well, my take on the letter is that she has some tremendous medical problems. She sold her mother's home. She's the beneficiary there, and there was taxes owed on that property. Pretty substantial amount. Obviously, I think her, her mother was probably not able to pay those taxes. I just think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Just follow-up questions, question. So we waived the penalty, but she still owed $3,000.
Nine, yes, sir, $3,915.53.
So there was your motion, he is to waive, I guess, the penalties and interest, and she just paid it, what she owed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we, we, we're not making a decision for one. We're making a decision for a lot of people, precedent, the precedent setter. Now, if, if, if down the road, we're talking penalties and interest again, and there's a lot of people watching this online, here, here we are. So I, I want to do, I also want to help, but we're making, I think we're making a decision at this point to help going forward. So if we're all willing to live with that, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, hey, we're going to get these hands up, okay? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was reading in a letter that there was a payment plan set up. Was that payment plan based on the 4600, or was that payment plan based on the 391553 without the penalties and interest?
That actually was based on the delinquent of 2021. That was not included in the 2022. So for 2021, it was $4,372.26, which she had been making payments on, so her balance was $1,137.29.
So that's just for 2021?
That's correct.
And then, so there has not been one for 2022 as of yet?
No, sir.
So is there going to be a payment plan for 2022 as well, just to ensure that we are able to get that all recovered?
Now, that's not the normal process, but, I mean, that may be something that the Commissioner may consider now that we did decide to waive the penalties and interest, but, I mean, you know, we would have to meet on that to see if that's something he would want to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All in favor? The pass is five oh. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Item number 11, I'm going to ask that our Vice Chair, Mr. Edwards, if he would, handle this item. Thank you, sir. I mean, I'm sorry. Running. Commissioner Cowan, that's right. Commissioner Cowan, can you, can you sit in for me, please?
I just have one comment. Typically, when you do the Vice Chair, it normally the motion is made in there as a second. In this particular instance, we never did make that motion at second. I think I said. Yeah, I think you're going to have to come back in the motion. It's going to have to be a motion on the floor to make running the Vice Chair. We never do that.
My running with the Vice Chair, again, the first Yeah. He was appointed on, on the first meeting in January. He was appointed Vice Chair.
Number 11, please.
Number 11.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number 11.
Our presenter is Nelson McCracken. It's regarding FFA purchasing is requesting approval of the Steel Co. Builders contract to construct a horse pole barn at the FFA camp. The cost, $499,800, and the funding source is a state grant. Yes, it is budgeted and no match.
Thank you. I'm Buddy Adams, the project manager for the FFA camp and Newton County Ag Center. Mr. McCracken, who you might know, is in charge of the Newton County FFA Center and the one at Fort Valley. Had an emergency arise this afternoon, and is still in Fort Valley trying to put the fires out. We appreciate this, and we appreciate the effort that Randy Fecher and her office has done to help us get through this bid process. It bid the first time, was over budget. We went in, made some addendums, and we have it in budget this time. Steel Co. was low bidder on it. They've used basically Newton County contractors to help them and get the thing in budget for us. We know that this is some state money that's coming through the county, and we greatly appreciate it if you would sign this contract and let us move forward. We've got some people anxious to use this facility. Any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, as stated by the representative of the FFA camp.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sanders, do you have a question?
Yeah, I get you.
Well, get the motion. Let's get the motion in the second first.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Steel Co. Builders contract to build a horse barn, horse pole barn at the FFA camp?
District one made the motion.
Have District one make a motion, and I have a second.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Any questions?
The first question I have is in regards to the grant. Is this a grant that was given to Newton County or given to the FFA camp?
Given to the FFA camp.
Okay.
But the money, the way the money was handled, it had to come through Newton County process.
Okay.
And my second question, I need clarification from the county attorney in regards to affiliation and conflict of interest, because I want to make sure that I'm voting correctly and ethically.
The Chair advised me that while he has no business, no other business relationship with Steel Co. Buildings Incorporated, he does park his trucks in that yard, and I think he is elected to recuse himself to avoid the appearance of a conflict, which is the appropriate action when you have a relationship or a perceived conflict of interest with the contract.
Okay. Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So Buddy, just to reiterate, the Board of Commissioners is simply a conduit for this money coming from the state to the FFA camp. Is that correct?
Correct. And the money, when the money was sent to Newton County, it was approved by this board to accept the money, and now you have to approve the contract for us to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I have a motion and a second?
You've already got that.
You have the motion in the second.
Right. Okay. All in favor?
We'll call for a motion.
Who we got? Three? Three, two sentences? Okay. Um, your reason for explaining?
Unfortunately, I, I'm very ethical when it comes to voting. So I don't feel comfortable voting on something with the information that was provided. So I will not vote on this matter. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, uh, thank you, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Cowan. I, I just, I just don't feel comfortable. I don't feel comfortable at where we are at at this period on this, on this, on this board. It's important, I think, that we should have tabled it, tabled it and to make sure that, um, um, we were doing somewhat the right thing.
Okay, motion passes three to two. Ms. Hamilton?
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number twelve, presented by Ms. Brittany White, our Finance Director for the April twenty-twenty-three Financial Update. As a matter of fact, press pause on that, Chairman. We're right at seven twenty-eight.
Seven thirty, I'm sorry. Seven thirty-one, I apologize. Guys, it's seven thirty-one, um, it's time for our zoning. Ms. Appleweight, if you would, please, come on up, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman and Board. We just have three items to leave for a public hearing. Our first case today is say Future Land Use Map Amendment. It is case number FLU twenty-three dash zero 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 five. The existing land use map is public institution. The proposed land use map is for commercial. Current zoning is our three, single-family residential. It's in the Yellow River watershed and the address is twenty-nine-four Highway eighty-one and Highway eighty-one. Tax ID numbers for these two parcels is zero zero four five zero six zero and zero zero four five zero four nine A. It is a total of three point five acres. One parcel is two point five acres, the other is one. Current owner is listed as LSC one six four A dash one LLC. And our petitioner today is Maria Alves. This, uh, petition was heard before the Planning Commission in April, April twenty-fifth, and they recommended approval of this future land use map amendment to commercial. And applicant's intent is to designate the flume of these total three point five acres to commercial in order to seek a rezoning of the property for a special events facility. And here we have an aerial of the two parcels. Um, currently, there is a church that sits in front here and then we've got a house on this parcel and another house in the back here. And the applicant's intent is to eventually convert all of that into the special events facility buildings. Future land use map is public institutional. Here it says the blue up here, the two parcels. And we see the commercial is actually right adjacent to it and then just a little bit further down Highway eighty-one. And of course, on one sixty-two here. And the pale yellow would be residential. This is a zoning map. It's currently zoned our three, single-family residential and sits adjacent and opposite commercial zoning. And it's in the Yellow River. This is a survey that was presented by the applicant showing the current structures on the property. And again, the current, uh, flume is public institution and they are requesting to change it to commercial. And pursuant to the Salem, Carter areas, recommended land uses, commercial is an appropriate land use request. And should the board decide to approve this petition, staff is of the opinion that a future land use amendment may be appropriate in this area. And this is a map amendment, so there are no conditions attached to this time. Should the board approve it, it will come before you again for the rezoning, at which time recommendations can be made. Are there any questions for our staff? I believe the applicant is here, Chairman.
Thank you. We're going to, um, it's seven thirty-four, we're going to open up our public hearing. For those that want to, you, you have ten minutes to do so. For those that want to speak in favor of this tonight, the applicant, and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come at this time and state your name, your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. Ms. Appleweight, you did say the applicant is here? Okay. Okay. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Maria Alves. My address is four eighty-two Coneyos, Georgia, three hundred twelve. I'm, I am here to inform you that my intention is to propose the change of the future land use from residential to commercial to allow special events at this location. Thank you so much for your time. If you, um, have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Thank you.
May I be seated?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our, um, public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? You may come at this time, state your name, your address for the record, please. Would anyone like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Appleweight? Um, District, uh, four, if I'm not mistaken.
This isn't four, yes.
I'm sorry?
District four, correct.
Commissioner Henderson?
First of all, thank, um, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the recommendation, Stan.
Second?
It's a motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussions? All in favor? The pass is five oh. Ms. Appleweight?
Thank you, Chairman. The next item, uh, up is a ordinance amendment for UDO AMD twenty-three dash zero zero one and the resolution number is O zero five one six twenty-three. It's an ordinance to amend the Newton County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter One, which is our zoning ordinance, Article Five, Division Five one five, to repeal conflicting provisions and to provide for an effective date and further purposes. This ordinance has to do with our off-street parking. And for the past few weeks, we have, um, there's been discussion on how best, uh, the ordinances can be updated, you know, to reflect current uses and needs in the community. So the first, um, amendment that was proposed, this was heard actually before the Planning Commission. On March twenty-eighth, it was tabled and staff was asked to further revise ordinance. And then it was heard again, um, last month, April twenty-fifth, and the Planning Commission recommended approval for the changes. They did make some slight changes that I'll go over, um, with the board today. So the first, um, amendment that was proposed was for recreational vehicles in excess of twenty thousand pounds to be prohibited in, you know, the small residential neighborhoods. And these are just examples of what the large, these are the large motorhome buses, um, that we have, we've gotten complaints about, you know, parking in subdivisions. So this would be the first amendment that staff is proposing. And then there was the section B five, which is commercial vehicles and the restrictions on the lots. And we have the type two vehicles. Currently, the ordinance, um, prohibits anything, you know, between the one, you only have to be, if you're less than an acre, you won't be allowed to have these type two commercial vehicles. And staff has proposed to remove that, which is this second column here. And then, within the buildable area, initially, staff had proposed to the Planning Commission that just vehicles weighing no more than six thousand one hundred pounds. The Planning Commission asks that to be bumped up a little bit to twelve thousand pounds. And these are, you know, like the vans and the most common vehicles that, you know, people use for work, pickup trucks, the small vans. And what we're proposing that they can park those there in the front yard. Currently, those have to be parked at the side and the rear. So staff is proposing to allow those to be parked in what we call the buildable area, which is the front, on the driveway, more or less. It has to be out of the right of way. It has to be out of pedestrian paths, which would be like the sidewalks and so on. And these would be those same vehicles, no more than twelve thousand pounds, with up to two ladders. Because we're still trying to preserve the integrity of the residential neighborhood. And the third amendment, it'd be from the type three vehicles, which it just basically explains a little bit, like the vehicles that currently are not allowed to park. Um, so we went ahead and stated them, like the bucket trucks, you know, buses, vehicles with, you know, gross weight over twenty thousand pounds and, you know, tanker vehicles and so on. So this is an example of the vehicles that we are proposing to be allowed to be parked, you know, in the front yard. Right, currently, this first one is allowed because it has no outside storage, as we call it. This one here wouldn't be. So we're proposing to change that to allow this type of vehicle to be parked in the front yard, you know, along with a pickup truck with all the equipment on there. And this is just a chart that we've provided to kind of give guidance. It shows the three types of vehicles, class one, class two, and class three. So class three vehicles are the vehicles that are not allowed currently in residential areas. And this is just, um, it's a diagram to give you an idea of where the front side and the rear yards are. Okay. So, um, as I said, the Planning Commission, they recommended this first portion to be approved. And then we have a second portion, which was not included in this general amendment. It is a proposal made by the Sheriff's Department. And this is the same section, five ten dash zero one zero, B six. Currently, our ordinance allows exceptions for just law enforcement vehicles. The sheriff, um, you know, we had a discussion and he has proposed that we allow the wrecker trucks, which are a part of his program that helps to clear up accidents. He is asking that we allow these vehicles to be parked in residential areas. Currently, there are the flatbed trucks or the wreckers. They are class three. They are not allowed in residential areas. And he's asking to have this provision, you know, amended to allow them there. And I believe the sheriff is here, so he can speak a little more to, um, his request. So this would be the second part that the board would vote on. And if there are any questions, the, the issue we have now with this is, um, in terms of managing wreckers, um, it's kind of hard to manage them even now because we do have some that are in violation. You know, they're parking in the right of way, they're parking in the front yard and they really shouldn't be there. And it's just having the staff to manage that kind of thing. So if we, um, if the board does decide to approve this, we would have to come up with a way to manage that. And I think these are the amendments that have been proposed. Again, the Planning Commission did approve this section as well. And if there are any questions for staff, I'm here. If not, I believe this is a public hearing as well, Chairman.
Okay, so we're doing these separate, uh?
Yeah, they're, the, the Planning Commission voted on them separately, yeah.
Okay. So we'll do the first one first, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So the applicant is Newton County, um, would anyone like to speak in favor of this tonight? If you have ten minutes to do so, if you would, please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening again. Uh, Debbie Harper, President of the Newton Chamber and, um, Newton County resident. Uh, Mr. Jenkins, who, um, is the pro-ruder plumber, who had some, um, citations from the county on this, was not able to be here. Um, but I've been working with him and working with, um, Shayna's office and then we came to the Planning Commission meetings. There was good discussion on that. So, uh, we're very pleased with what is presented. And, um, also from, um, a workforce standpoint, we really think that'll benefit our, um, service industry, um, business in the county as well as a quicker response for our residents when things go wrong. So, um, thank you for considering and supporting this.
Anyone else? That portion of our public hearing is closed, which you, if, we also allow ten minutes for anyone that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Anyone would like to oppose tonight?
Back up. I'm not really opposing, I really have a question. Um, this does not supersede covenants and, okay, good. Thank you for that. Okay.
I'll answer that out loud. No, if there are restrictive covenants that are otherwise enforceable, those restrictive covenants would remain enforceable regardless of your zone ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else like to oppose?
Good evening. So this is the first time I'm hearing this. I'm not really sure I understand all of the information. However, I, I do have a concern. I live in a subdivision, um, where we have had issues with, um, moving, big moving trucks being parked in the front yard, huge vehicles. So I, I saw what was put up here, it was kind of quick. So I'm kind of not really sure where to go from this point, but I do have a concern living in the subdivision and we having had previous issues with commercial vehicles being parked on the street and in the yard and creating, um, some, some, some issues.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, can you, I'm sorry, can you give us your name, please?
Nikki Church.
Nikki Church. Thank you so much.
Yes.
And again, Shayna, this is the first section of this, this is not, this is the second section, right? All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to oppose? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Appleweight? Uh, you can answer too. Shayna, would you like to answer those questions that was asked?
I don't recall the first one.
I'm sorry?
I don't recall the questions, sir.
Well, I think Patrick answered the first one.
Yes, with the, with the confidence, yes.
Yeah, the second one was just talking about the, um, commercial vehicles parked in the front yard and on the streets.
Yes, currently, as the ordinance is written, those are, um, prohibited. Um, they're prohibited in residential subdivisions, period. Um, if they are parked in the front yard or in the right way, they are in violation.
Okay. But they can, what, Commissioner Mason?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So they are prohibited, meaning that you cannot park them on the front lawn. They cannot be parked on the, uh, street, but they can be parked in the driveway. Is that what this?
For the commercial vehicles?
Yes.
You're asking specifically about the wreckers or just type three?
So we, so listen, let's separate the two.
Okay, yeah.
Let's deal with the first one. He's asking about the commercial vehicles.
Okay.
The one with the ladder racks and all of it.
Correct, the two ladders.
Yes. Okay, so we, so those would be class one vehicles, which would be like these are vans, the pickup trucks and so on, as long as they don't have any ladders on them. You know, they're considered class one. Even if they have a logo, they can park in the front yard right now, as long as they don't have like the ladders and, you know, all the other equipment attached to it right now. So that would be our class one commercial vehicles. Those are allowed currently. If you have ladders on them and other things attached to them, they become class two and they have to be parked at the side or the rear. And then to class three vehicles, you know, the buses, the wreckers, you know, these are not allowed at all in residential areas. You need ten acres or more at least, you know, to, before you can begin looking at parking those.
So I think what, um, the resident was asking, the class two vehicles, um, would those be allowed to be parked in the driveway? Not, or do those, does the class two vehicles still have to be parked on the side or the, in the rear?
So what we are proposing now is to have not all of the class, so just the ones that, you know, have the, the ladders on them, up to two ladders. Is what we are proposing, that they can park in the driveway now.
I'm going to ask you a question. So, um, Shayna, so we, you know, we got to be fair to, to everybody. You tell it, so when you say that, you telling a, you telling that plumber that he can park his vehicle in the front yard, but you telling the framer that he can't because the framer going to have more, uh, than two ladders on his truck. So we, if we're going to do this, we need to be fair across the board. And just, that's just my opinion. Because you telling someone that, uh, you telling two people that work on the same construction job, uh, that when they leave their job, they don't have the same rights when they come home. You see what I'm saying?
Yep, I, I see that.
Any, any more questions? Commissioner Sanders? Any, any more questions? Commissioner Sanders?
So currently, when I want to make sure, we don't even have this in place. So we're making this, we're, we're amending to add the plumbers and, and, and actually the racks. I actually went to your zoning meeting. I actually sat there and listened to the commissioners actually talk about this. So my concern would be also the residents that live in the subdivision. So we're making an exception for the one ladder, which I, I, which I'm thinking is okay. But for those who live in a subdivision, it's kind of like a happy medium. So which we have to try to find that happy medium, because if we're allowing larger trucks, more equipment on it, then now we're inconveniencing those who live in a subdivision. So that's where we have to think about that, those two portions. Because we don't have this in place, we're moving forward for the first time to possibly amend this and see how it works. But I don't, in my opinion, I don't think we should be adding on more in the beginning. We don't know how this is going to work out, especially for those who live in subdivisions.
Anyone else? Commissioner Galloway.
Thank you. Patrick, have you had a chance to review this?
I have. And from a legal standpoint, it's fine. You do have a business decision to make, well, legislative decision to make. Uh, the ordinance as proposed, and Ms. Applewhite, correct me if I get something wrong. Class one vehicles, which is the top level, those can be parked in the front yard or in the driveway. If the proposal is approved. If the proposal is approved, the class two vehicles on your chart, including vehicles with up to two ladders, can park in the driveway in front of the house, but not in the yard. Correct? Or you allow them to park in the yard as well?
Well, currently, the class two vehicles can park in the side or rear yard.
If approved, forget about the current, if approved. If approved, the new ordinance would authorize class two vehicles in the driveway in front of the house.
Correct. In addition, yeah.
And the class three vehicles would still be prohibited in residential area. So that's the business decision you have to make, is do you want to allow the class two vehicles to be able to park in small lot subdivisions or not? But keep in mind, there might still be restrictive covenants that would prevent it. And you're not, you're not changing those neighborhoods. So if there's a restrictive covenant, we, we have no control over restrictive covenants.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm kind of lost at this point, but let me ask this. So three ladders or more, I got a van with three ladders on it. That's in the side or the rear? Is that correct? With, if we pass this? Right now, it's not, and right now, it's not allowed at all?
Yes, sir, it is allowed. Now, if you park it aside or the rear, you just can't park in your front yard.
So three ladders are still on the side or in the back?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Um, Commissioner Henderson?
Question I have, who, who, who's going to, uh, somewhat police all these people and tell them that you take their two or three ladders and put them in the back? Because I, I don't, I see not too much changing at this point.
Well, um, yes, so, uh, if we, once we receive complaints, code enforcement will respond and conduct an investigation to see if there's a violation or not.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
I actually attended the, the, the planning commission meeting and heard from the residents that were appointed by us. And they approved this five to zero. And they actually made some exceptions. They actually did their homework. They went to Gin, again, sorry, Gin, and went and got the, received the information in regards to the trucks and the, and the amount, the poundage of the trucks. So they did their research on the planning commission, uh, side, the people that we appointed on that board. So I am going to, uh, make an emotion to approve the amendments to the Newton County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter One Zoning Ordinance, Article Five, Division Five Fifteen, repeal conflicting provisions provided for an effective date. Um, well, I'm going to approve that amendment.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
Okay, chairman, thank you. And the second part of the amendment would be, um, it's the same Division Five Fifteen, Section Five One Five Zero One Zero. The proposal is put forward by the sheriff's department to include the wrecker vehicles as part of the Newton County Wrecker Rotation Program to be allowed to park in residential areas. And that is a public hearing.
So who's, who's the applicant on that? I know that's not us. So who would that be?
It would be the sheriff's office proposing it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, this is seven fifty-five. Um, we're going to open it up now for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have 10 minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. And for those of you that make up this board tonight, it's good to be here. I would respectfully ask that you would approve, um, the recommendation that we have put forward for the wrecker service. I understand, um, as a resident, I don't know whether I would really admire a wrecker ser, a wrecker being next door to me. But however, I'm here on behalf of every citizen in Newton County and those who pass through Newton County, uh, so I have to look, overlook my personal thought. And I look at it as being that the timeframe in which a wrecker is to respond to a given location. And I believe we submitted, did we submit the names of the wrecker service, miss, miss? Okay. But however, we only have four wrecker services that tow for the county. So you're only talking a small number of wreckers that's going to be in a residential area. So my position is it's better for those wreckers to be placed in a very, uh, strategic area in the event if we need a wrecker. Not necessarily that we would call the next list wrecker, but however, we would call the next wrecker or the wrecker that is closest to that community. Uh, we see it happens all the time, and so we would just request that you would, uh, follow the recommendation that we've set for. I, I believe it's, uh, something that's conducive to what we can work with. Also, we're going to provide the information to Ms. Applewhite in terms of those wreckers, uh, that tow for us. As a matter of fact, we had considered, um, devising some form of a, a identifier for those wreckers that's going to be parked, so that when code enforcement encounter these vehicles, they will know that they belong to the tow service for the Office of Sheriff. And not only the Office of Sheriff, the wreckers tow for all law enforcement services here in Newton County. Covington Police, Oxford Police, Port Adele Police, Georgia State Patrol, or any law enforcement official who stopped vehicles in this county. Those wrecker services tow, uh, those vehicles. And it's responsibility of the sheriff to say who become a part of that list to tow. So I would urge you to accept the recommendation as set forth. Again, it's conducive to, I think, for the community, for Ms. Applewhite, and also for the Office of Sheriff. Any questions?
So let us, let us get through with the public hearing.
You're right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for anyone that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. State your name and your address for the record, please, if you would like to oppose tonight. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite? Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, you want to make a motion or?
That, uh, coming first, a question that, that I wanted to ask was it since we only have about four wrecker, wreckers, uh, throughout Newton County to pick up vehicles, maybe someone had to, uh, leave for whatever reason, that would they have some type of emblem on it? Or this doesn't matter, just their wrecker, uh, company emblem on it? It was a question I had.
Uh, yes, I believe the, um, sheriff has considered having some kind of a decal on those vehicles to identify them, is what, um, he has proposed.
Okay. Well, have, have you ever said that? Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve as was suggested by the sheriff.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passed five oh. Thank you.
One more. We have one final item this afternoon, chairman. This is a transmittal. Yeah, right there. All right. So this is a discussion consideration of the approval of the transmittal resolution. It's R zero five one six two zero two three. And report for our fiscal year twenty-two, C I E, capital improvement elements, as well as our short-term work program, to send to DCA for review and approval. And, and because we collect impact fees, we are required to update DCA annually on, you know, the progress of our programs and, you know, show how much money we're using and what it was spent on. And maintaining this does allow the county to maintain its qualified local government status. And we are required to have this adopted by the board by June thirtieth as well. So, uh, this table, the, the table, this chart was provided to each commissioner in the packets. So it's a little small to read here, but you should be able to see it in your packets. But these are the projects that we have and their respective costs and the proposed timelines as updated by those department heads. And then we just have a breakdown of our capital projects. This is the library. There's still pending, um, funds. Two have been completed, Oak Hill Branch and, uh, library collection volumes at the autumn. These are the projects as proposed by Parks and Recreation. And you can see them listed there by district, the cost, and their current status. And some are still pending available funds, some are ongoing, and some have been started. These are capital improvement projects for the roads department, as provided by that department. And again, it goes through the different projects that they will be working on and the current status of each, as well as the costs. And we have our financial report for the end of the year. It just breaks down the impact fees by department, library, parks and rec, roads. And it looks at the balance is just over 4.5 million dollars. So once the board has approved this, it will be transmitted to Northeast Georgia, who will in turn send it up to DCA. They'll review it and make any comments. And then it comes back down to the board for adoption. And I'll take any questions. Yes, ma'am?
Go ahead.
And may, maybe I missed it. I didn't, and if it should be on here, the sidewalk, walking trails for Fairview Road.
So Parks and Rec is here.
We received the $800,000 grant from Congressman Johnson last year. And that was supposed to start sometime this year.
So these are the projects that was, that were presented by the Parks and Rec Department. So, you know, the commission might be in the other section. I think it's in this table here. And I know that is too small to find, but it is for the cricket frog trail. It's in the table before. It was just about five million dollars.
Let's do this, guys. Let's, let's go ahead and open up our public hearing and she'll be to answer those questions. Could you come back?
Yeah, but it's in the table, but yeah, I know the, yeah, that's on for public hearing, chairman of, um, yeah, I'll find it.
Thank you. So it's actually eight oh four. Now, we're going to open it up for that, well, we are the applicant. Um, those who would like to speak in favor tonight, uh, we have 10 minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. You have 10 minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite, if you would.
Commissioner, on page one, we do have, um, the cricket, the trail, the, the trails that you were asked about. So, yeah, just above this blue line here, this is the cricket, um, cricket frog trail. Yeah. And then above there, we have the Spring Park Facility. And the sidewalk projects would be with the roads department projects. I know it's kind of.
Commissioner Sanders?
It's, it's actually the sidewalks and walking trails on Fairview Road. We were given a grant in 2021 for $800,000, and it was supposed to start this year. And I know we had to add additional funds to it. So I don't, I don't see that on the list, so that's, the residents of the community have been asking about these trails since we received that funding, and I haven't been given an answer of when it's going to start.
If it's not listed here, we, I can certainly, um, get with our transportation director and have him provide that information for me.
Because isn't there a expiration date if we don't use these funds by a certain time?
I'm sorry.
Because there's an expiration date, I believe, if we don't use these funds by a certain time.
We do have to use them, um. Okay, I'll make a note of that, Commissioner, and I will speak with our transportation director.
So, uh, um.
Or our recreation department director.
So my question would be to the chair, Mr. Chairman and our county attorney. Are we voting on this tonight if something is not on this? Or do I just go ahead and place it as an amendment to make sure it's on this document?
Your deadline, Ms. Applewhite, is the end of June to transmit this, is that right?
No, to, for it to be adopted. So I have to send it up. Yes, sir. So I have to send it as soon as possible.
Yeah. That, that needs to be included. Because that is a project we applied for a grant to be done.
Okay.
And the community wants their sidewalks and trails, which is really needed on the west side of Newton because we're so dense.
Yeah, we can absolutely add it in. It'll be an amendment for tonight. And, um, yeah, we can add it in there.
I didn't, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
We can add it as an amendment for tonight. So should the board approve it, it will be included, and then we can transmit.
Okay.
So Patrick, do you, would you like to, um?
I'm not sure I'm familiar enough with the project to be able to answer that question. Um. I don't know whose, whose department that falls under. It may have better.
Uh, Chester. It was one of the projects presented to us at the retreat.
I think Chester is here.
Chester's here? Chester, it's Chester. Sir, if you would, please come on up. Can you talk, can you please come up here and explain the grant that, um, that we applied for, um, from Congressman Grant, uh, Congressman Johnson, um, that gave $800,000 to connect, um, to Johnson Park?
So, uh, Congressman Johnson's office gave us 800,000, and we were going to add another 200,000 for a million dollar, um, trail project. And so, you know, we just.
And, and that's, clarify, that's the trail project to do what now?
Well, it's supposed to go from, um, Gin Motors over to, um, the Rockdale County line on, um, Fairview Road. So, um, what, uh, we had discussed, I guess, a, a few months back at the, um, at the retreat, that, uh, that money was then handed over to, um, Georgia Department of Transportation to, um, to administer. So when that happened, um, it opened up all kinds of environmental requirements, and they call it the, uh, planned development process. So when that happened, it opened up all kinds of environmental requirements, and they call it the planned development process. So, so basically, at this point, it will be several years before we will go to construction on that, that sidewalk because GDOT has the administrative authority for that project. I was hoping that we would get that authority straight from the federal government, but that was not the case. So at this point, we can only use that money for engineering.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Applewhite.
I had a question for Mr. Clay. So when you explain, when you stating several years, because I know at the retreat, you actually gave a date on when we're going to start the engineering, when the project was going to begin. Because we were waiting on the number, the code from GDOT, which we did receive last July.
And I'm still waiting for GDOT to, to give us what they call a project framework agreement to start the engineering. So the engineering could take a couple of years and then maybe three. And then at that point, we'll have to find some additional money, either SPOLOST or otherwise, to, to construct the trail. The only way we could avoid that delay, we could start the trail, you know, within six, nine months if we use our local funds. But we would have to return the grant money or reject the grant money from Congressman Johnson's office to do that.
And that was a question you had to ask us at the retreat for us to make the decision, and we never did.
So we proceeded with the federal money, but unfortunately, since GDOT's managing it, it takes, it takes forever.
So that's going to be the decision for, I guess, us as a board, whether we wait years to put trails in the most dense area where our kids are walking in the street to go to school?
Thanks, sir.
Or we use the funding?
Can you get a motion, please, guys? This is a motion to send this to. Yes. Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, you did one there?
My abstention.
Okay, you want to state your reason why?
Yeah, my abstention is in regards to, I don't see that all the projects are being disseminated through all the districts equally in regards to our youth. And the reason why I state that, because the sidewalks are a huge issue for the west side of Newton. We've had a child that was hit by a car trying to walk to school, and this is a huge problem. Fairview Road alone has two schools where these kids are trying to ride their bikes in the middle of a road on a busy highway, and that is a problem. I am, I have a heart for the youth. I'm going to keep speaking up for them regardless. I don't care how long. Y'all tired of hearing me talk about our youth in Newton County? We have to do something. We have a problem, and it needs to be done, and that should be included on this project before going up to DCA.
It passes three, one, one abstention. Thank you so much.
Chairman, I think those are all the items for today.
The one abstention, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you.
Ms. Ham.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number twelve. We are being presented by Ms. Brittany White, Finance Director, April twenty twenty-three Financial Update.
Good evening. Tonight I will be presenting the April twenty twenty-three Financial Report. April is the tenth month of our fiscal year, so that puts us roughly about eighty-three percent through our fiscal year. I'll start with the general fund revenues. To date, we have brought in seventy-nine point seven million, which puts us at ninety-four percent of our revenues. These two graphs just show the per month revenue that we bring in and then the actual to budget to revenue. The general fund expenditures, to date, we are at sixty-eight point three million, which puts us at seventy-nine point nine percent. So we're turning about three to four percent under our actual to budget, which we've been doing consistently throughout the year. And the graphs just show the per month breakdown of our expenditures and the actual to budget. So at this point in the year, our general fund revenues are at eleven point four million over our expenses, but that will progressively decrease as we go through the year. We have three enterprise funds. The Water Fund, their revenue to date is eight point one million. Their expenses to date is five point seven million. Our Solid Waste Fund, their revenue to date is six point two million, and their expenses are five million. And our Gaithers and Factory Shoals Fund, revenue to date is two hundred and forty-one thousand, and the expenses is two hundred thousand. We have three active SPOLOST now. The eleven SPOLOST has one remaining project. The two thousand seventeen SPOLOST is our most active SPOLOST. There are several projects going with our two thousand seventeen. The current balance there is thirty-eight point one million. We have three more months left to collect on the seventeen SPOLOST. And then after we're done collecting on the seventeen, we'll start collecting on the twenty twenty-three SPOLOST. So our current collections over projections right now are thirty-one million in the two thousand seventeen SPOLOST. Twenty twenty-three SPOLOST, like I said, we've not started collecting on that, but we did bond the projects. So we do have several of those projects going, Public Safety Fleet, Countywide Park Improvement, Senior Services Enrichment Center, West Side Community Park, South Side Community Park, and the Community Water Park. And then currently in the Impact Fee Fund, we have four point seven million dollars. Any questions?
Thank you, Brittany. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item that we have on the agenda is item number thirteen. It's being presented via Zoom from Miss Kennedy Shannon with iParametrics LLC. iParametrics and/or BLC purchasing is requesting approval of Amendment One to the Agreement for American Rescue Plan Act Consulting Services Contract of iParametrics LLC. Cost, four hundred twenty thousand. Total contract not to exceed eight hundred forty thousand. The funding source is ARPA and budgeted yes, a match no.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Doing well, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you for being on tonight.
No problem. So before you is our request to amend our contract. I know we spoke about this at the last meeting. There were some questions that were asked. They wanted an opportunity to see it in writing, so we did that. We also had an opportunity for Patrick to take a look at it and chime in on it, and he didn't see any issues with it. So at this point, we're pretty much asking for ten percent administrative cost for all the programming that we are doing for you all. Again, this was not originally in the RFP that we won. When we came aboard, it was just understood that we would be providing general consulting services. But after the situation with the Salvation Army and the fraud and mismanagement that took place, it was asked us to then run that program and to run all of your programs, which we have no objection to. It's just that the original amount that we bid does not cover for all the additional services that we're, that we're offering and that we're going to provide. That being said, we just want ten percent administrative cost, the same what you would give to any other organization that run these programs. And we give a breakdown of all the programs that we're running. There are a total of nine, and they equal eight point four million, which is why we're asking for ten percent. This amendment also says that if a new program is brought forward, we will also ask for ten percent of whatever that ARPA project amount would be to be added to the contract as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Or Commissioner Sanders?
I don't have a question per se, but it was ironic that I was invited to a session today at Georgia Tech called Technology in Government. And I was actually the only elected official in the room with staff from other counties, clerk of courts and so forth. And there is a software called Laserfish. And Laserfish is what counties are using to manage their ARPA and create the processes and the programs and the applications. And so when they mentioned that, it was exciting to me, and I asked the gentleman, I said, well, we need to be on that. And he said, Newton County does have Laserfish. So we have this software to help maintain and build processes. I know we're probably the latter part of the game because our consultant has already started this. But we have this process in-house that we could have been using from day one to create the programming for ARPA and all of the applications that we're paying for, and we're not utilizing all this capability. So I'm sitting in this room with those staff people, clerk of courts, and those who do the open records and utilize this software, and learning that other counties are utilizing Laserfish to maintain their programming, applications, and everything for ARPA to save money. So county, Mr. County Manager, I asked that you go check with our IT department, because I did send him an email today when I found out about it, and to actually look into that especially for future use, because that could have saved us thousands of dollars.
I'll definitely look at it, Madam Commissioner. In addition to that, I had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Shannon, and we talked about the existing efforts that she's put forth thus far and how I'll be able to come in and support her in her efforts as well.
Any more questions for Ms. Shannon, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think one of the questions that I had asked at the last meeting, Ms. Shannon, and we, and I posed it to the, I guess, one of the county attorneys. The county has a lot, sit around in this horseshoe. It was look at the contract and maybe at this meeting, give us some, well, maybe give me some kind of review or give us some kind of review as far as about the ten percent. And tell me, tell us a little about it.
You want me to address that now?
Sure.
Yeah. And we did review the contract, and so the, the contract as it exists today pays, calls for the county to pay to iParametrics ten percent of the, of the first batch, which was the four point two million of ARPA funds, up to four hundred and twenty thousand. But that contract was limited to consulting services. The proposal before you now is to expand the services from iParametrics from consulting to actually building programs, administering programs, and managing programs, which was not part of their original scope of work. So the decision for the board to make is, do we want to, do we want to expand the tasks that we assign to iParametrics so that they can continue to design, implement, and manage these projects? Or do you want to bring that in-house? And I don't, I don't know if which of those is better for you. I don't know which is more cost-effective. I don't know which is more feasible. I don't know which one you're going to be able to achieve quicker. I know at the point where we are today, I do know there are a lot of programs, and if you look at the programs listed in the contract amendment, these are programs that people are kind of expecting to happen right now. I'm willing to bet, without speaking for Mr. Cooper, that if what the board's decision is, is we want to manage those programs, I expect Mr. Cooper's probably going to have a pretty substantial re-engagement period to start up the implementation of those programs. So basically, it's a question, do we want to expand the services for which iParametrics is being paid? And obviously, if we do, then we would expand the payments to them as well.
Well, I just want to say this. I've been apologizing to the citizens of Newton County, especially about some of the programs that we, that we've had. And some of those, some of those programs, if they, they need to be, they need to be done, seem to need to be done quicker, but it couldn't be done quicker. And then does, our ten percent, is there the two hundred and, I think it was a hundred twenty-five dollars an hour? Is that in addition to, to somebody, you know, organization paying, repaying them debt for answering the telephone? And then we know to get as the answer, how many more would we have to pay if we, if we used Ms. Kennedy? And I think, and if somebody was saying she was a lawyer, and I was thinking in terms of the same amount of money we paid, maybe Patrick made about two hundred fifty dollars an hour. And I felt sorry for the citizens of Newton County, especially ones who really need help. We couldn't get to them fast enough. Then we spoke to somebody, uh, come to the county and sit in a chair and a computer, maybe help sign them up. We never did get to the best of my knowledge. And I felt bad. And then the seniors, we haven't got to that too either. We said something about fifteen thousand dollars, and we knew it was going to take more fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars fix on one house. And so there was something, I guess, and maybe I'm a little behind, that we need to address it, at least bring it up to forty thousand dollars. And we haven't got there, or have we? Have we got there yet? Okay, so we haven't got there, and I get calls constantly about people trying to help people. And so I'm, I'm just going to say this. I know we first started, Commissioner Sanders had said about in-house. And I remember this board, we all said, whoa, no, we want to get us a consultant. And we did it. Ms. Kennedy, she does a good job, but we pay her as we do any consultant that we have. And one lady asked me, she said, well, how many consultants do you have? And I start counting with my fingers, and then I ran out of fingers, and then I start counting my toes, and I ran out of, I ran out my toes. And so I started making little marks on the wall. And so I think the consultant fees, they are killing us. They're just killing us. And that money that we're paying, I think it's close to a million dollars now, that we're paying, just think how much more better could it be if we could have took that same money, another half a million dollars, and, and distributed out into the communities for his need? Distribute to the folks who are in the motel who, who can't seem to get out, you know, and try to help somebody. And so that, that was concerns me, and it, and it kind of worries me. And it seems like, Patrick, you need to give us more of leadership as far as how can you help our new county manager for us to achieve this objective? And so we get more people. I think this was the objective of a county manager, this was the objective of having a county attorney, was to help people, especially as we had this, this, this additional cash from the American Rescue funded. So, you know, I'm just, I'm kind of on the line. I think we need to do something. And I think right now we're not helping as many people that I, that I hope to help.
And if I, if I could, those are, those are very good comments. Mr. Cooper and I have had an extensive conversation about Newton County's reliance on outside consultants, and I think that's something that Mr. Cooper is, is going to be looking at. You know, but your immediate question is, what do you do with these immediate programs? How do you implement your immediate ARPA programs? And that's not something I'm equipped to do. I'm not in the program management business.
I understand that. Well, I guess the last question I have, what happened to the people that were supposed to come over in, in this building or somewhere and help folks who need to help?
If I might add, we have a contract in place with Laura Bertrand. Those people will be starting June first, when the senior low-income home repair program starts. And that was the understanding, so there will be three people hired. I also want to address, because I think there is a misunderstanding of what it takes to run these programs from the, from some of the comments I heard from the community and some of the comments from the commissioners. You have to understand, you need a full grant management team to manage this money. These are federal dollars. They come with a lot of strings. I know I'm the only one that comes to this meeting, but it's not me running all of these programs for you. We have a team of case managers, people who answer the phone, people who have to check public record, people who have to check income. If you were to run these programs yourself, you would need a staff, a grants management staff of at least thirty people, period. And that's assuming you come with the level of subject matter expertise that we bring. That's why a lot of clients like consultants, because we already have a team in place. We do this, I do this for, I've got twenty-eight clients across the country. I'm managing a billion dollars in ARPA money as a firm. Every program you've done, we've done it three or four times for other clients. Because of that, we are efficient in how we can do our programming. We are asking ten percent. So for a million dollars, we're asking a hundred thousand dollars to give that money away. That's a whole team that's working on that program. If you had to hire a team to give that million dollars away, you would definitely spend more than ten percent. So I think there's a misunderstanding about the service that we provide to you. Not to mention, you're not going to have to worry about if it's compliant, if you're going to have to spend money back. Because as consultants, we come with insurance, right? We come with errors and liability insurance. We come with all of that. So if we make a mistake and mess up something for you, we're on the hook for that financially. So that's what you get as a consultant. And we're able to get these programs off of the, they may not be fast to you, but to create these programs and have them running the way that they are and as fast as they are, you would not be able to do that internally if you hired individuals. So I just want to make it very clear, it's a service that we provide.
Yes, and, and, and you're probably right, we couldn't. But I can tell you, what I do know is to see the government. But I can tell you, what I do know is to see the government, they got about 12 million and we have something like 12, 12, 24, and they have an extra staff person who handles their grant, their Arthur funding, and it runs really well. So I think, you know, we only know what somebody tells us. It's not something where we looked around and really actually talked to somebody who's doing it with their staff. And I believe personally, and I could be wrong, you know, I don't know everything, but I do know enough to know, and I don't think it should cost close to a million dollars for us to give some money away to some people who need it. I think maybe one or two staff people in-house could, could achieve that objective. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I stated at the last meeting, we voided this contract essentially when we asked iParametrics to take over for what the Salvation Army had started. We essentially voided this contract, and I would venture to say that iParametrics has exceeded what we've already paid them in their services. We were meeting, Commissioner Sanders, myself, I believe it was the former, the former county interim county manager, Ann Lloyd, at one point, I believe, were meeting once a month and getting absolutely nowhere. I believe iParametrics was a Godsend, and I will make the motion when it's time. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Are you making it in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approval of Amendment 1 to the Agreement for American Rescue Plan Act Consulting Services Contract of iParametrics LLC. Cost 420,000 dollars, total contract not to exceed 840,000. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Is there a second? It's motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, sir, I just want to make a correction. We did get somewhere. That, that worksheet was actually done by myself and also the board also assisted with that. So we did get somewhere. We gave them an actual blueprint that they didn't have to actually create to do because we took the time to do the research to do it. I was sitting in a meeting today with counties who did it, who are around our size, who did it without consultants. So that's why I stated that the program is in place. Yes, we had a later point, we can't switch from a consultant right now, but if we would have done it in the beginning when it was mentioned, we could have done it just like the City of Conyers, who also got almost the same amount of money we got, just like all those other places who receive funding. We have to trust our staff, and at this particular moment, we need to build staff. We don't even have a procurement department, we're not even in compliance. So we need to build staff to make sure we have this in Newton County, because Newton County is growing. And to constantly keep paying for consultants, this is not going at Ms. Attorney Shannon because she knows my plight, to constantly keep paying for consultants, if you pull the open records, which I did, with the amount of money we spent per month on consultants and you have consultants, one consultant almost making 30,000 dollars a month? That's a problem in Newton County. And we could create jobs in Newton County for our people here. There are people who are, who are in a profession to do this job, and we're spending millions of dollars on consultants for what?
All in favor? Oh, you got a question? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to add, the worksheet that we originally came up with was actually given to us by Gwinnett County. So it wasn't anything that was created and established by the subcommittee that was originally put in place. I know for a fact that it was because the commissioner who passed that down to us basically stated to me that that was passed to us because they were helping Newton County, because that's what they were doing in Gwinnett County. So that spreadsheet that we originally had-
That is false, point of, point of question, point of question, point of question. That's parliamentary procedure, point of question, that's parliamentary procedure. That's parliamentary procedure.
Wait a finish, sir.
Because lies are being told.
So that was passed down to us from Gwinnett County. I actually did get an opportunity to watch those previous subcommittee meetings. We really were not getting and progressing where we needed to be as quickly. The objective was to get these funds out to our citizens and to our community as quickly as possible. We were not doing that, and so we had to come up with the Plan B to be able to say, what can we do from an efficient place to get that out? And so that's when we brought iParametrics in just to consult. We didn't bring them in to run any of these programs. I don't think anybody would want to do any type of work for free. I don't think anybody would. And so we have now asked them to come in and to run every single program. They've ran our small business program, they're going to run the small business program, they're running our youth government program, they're going to run all the senior program. They are running and administering all these programs. And so I think what we're actually giving them 10% is efficient for what they are providing for us because this board could not do it themselves. This is federal dollars, we did not have the know-all to deal with this. This is the very first time, and will probably be the last time in a lifetime that we will ever get something like that from a pandemic. We don't know if it will ever happen again, prayerfully it will not. It was a pandemic, we got those funds, and so now we want to reinvest them back into our community, and we saw that this was the most efficient way. When we actually decided to bring on the consultant, it was a unanimous vote from this board that we would bring on a consultant, all five of us said yes. And so I just wanted to be known, put it on the record, that this entire board decided this, that they were going to move in this direction. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, sir, it is so sad that people don't want to give you credit for what you do. It's sad, it's really sad. I did that research so that we can move forward, because that money was sitting in an account for almost a year. And some of y'all didn't even know it was there until another commissioner told me about it, and I informed the board of that funding. I informed the board of that funding. Mr. Chairman, you just said to me, don't interrupt, but you just interrupted me. So I informed the board of that. So I did not go against what Attorney Shannon was doing. What I stated was, we need to move forward to make sure we have stuff in place. But we so being defensive and don't want to see someone do something in this community that we have a problem with that. I didn't come against not one commissioner on this board, I just said we need to move forward. And that's where the issues are coming, because I stated something, you think I'm coming at you. So the point of question is, why do you always have to say something every time I do?
Yeah, I'm calling for the, I'm calling for the vote. All in favor? Any, any, all in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? You oppose, Commissioner? You do?
I would like to make a comment if I may, or I would like to change it to an extension, so I can't, so I can't make a comment.
That's not, Patrick, point of order, that's not a legal reason. No, you just said point of order, so point of order, Patrick.
What's your basis for your extension?
Most when you make a, when you, when you ask for an extension is that you state the reason during your comment for the extension. Nobody on this board have ever had to go back and say, what's your, I'll tell it during the course of that extension.
Point of order, Patrick.
Okay, so who's running this? I mean, are, are we, are we stopping people from saying anything now? On this board?
I mean, Patrick, Patrick know what's point of order, it's a point of order.
I think it's appropriate, if you want to vote to abstain, that the record reflect that you're voting to abstain. But I also think it's appropriate that if you are abstaining, you state your reason therefore.
Well, I tell you, what the problem is, it's easy for, for people to spend somebody else's money. It's easy for when you, when there's, when, when, when we reach out and try to do something for the citizens of Newton County. And the reason why I didn't vote for a consultant, because it was a million dollars that each commissioner we had voted for, and I don't know how we did it, but somebody know we, we, we didn't even rescind the vote. It was some kind of funny vote that it transpired during the course of maybe another meeting. And there was a reason why I didn't vote for it, because I felt like that if this board made a motion and a second and we approved it, that it should actually happen. But I'm not surprised about that.
Thank you, it passes 3-1, 3, I'm sorry, 3-1, one extension.
Mr. Chair, we have three-
No problem, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have three items that will be presented by Mr. Chester Clegg, Transportation Director, number 14, 15, and 16. Number 14 is going to be Public Works is requesting approval of a change order, Amendment Number 1 for Colliers Engineering and Design Incorporated Professional Services Agreement for Yellow River Trail. The cost is 72,300. The splotched funding for 2017 is at 100% budgeted, yes. Number 15 is Public Works is also requesting approval to contract with Peach State Construction Company for the replacement of a culvert at 630 River Cove. The cost for that, 99,450 dollars. The source for that funding is 2017 splotched at 100%. And then Public Works is also requesting approval to contract with Summit Construction and Development for the construction of the access road at I-20 from east of Crowell Road to west of Harold Dobbs Road. The cost for that one is 7 million, 7, excuse me, 7,540,672 dollars and 64 cents. The funding for that particular item is construction is going to be funded 80% by Federal Highway Administration. The 20% remaining is 2017 splotched, and all of these have a deadline of this evening by midnight, May 16th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, I'd like to turn the first project, which is the Yellow River Trails, over to the project manager, Jeff Pryon.
Good evening.
Good evening. So Collier Engineers was brought on board to help us do land agent services as we seek to purchase the easements along the first segment of the, of the trail from the city of Portidale up to I-20 and over to Fairview. As part of the analysis of that effort, we've identified about 13 to 14 parcels that are going to require us to do appraisals as part of that process. This amendment is for us to conduct the appraisal services through Colliers Engineering, and Patrick was a part of that process of evaluating that and giving us his opinion as well.
Thank you. Commissioners? So, so we don't take long, we just, we just seek a motion from anybody, it'd be fine. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, it's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? More extension? In favor, all right. It passes, Commissioner Sanders, I didn't see, I didn't see your hand. You afford it? Okay, it passes five, oh, thank you.
The next item I have is, is a culvert on River Cove Road has, has failed and needs to be replaced. And I've got two quotes on replacement of the culvert. One was 99,000, the second one was 102,000. The lowest bid was by Peach State Construction requesting approval to contract Peach State Construction to replace the double-barrel 16-inch diameter culvert.
Thank you, sir, I seek a motion, please. Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five, oh.
The final item I have, Mr. Chairman, is the award of the construction contract to Summit Construction for the construction of the bypass road at Crowell Road 920. The cost of the construction is, the contract is 7,540,672 dollars and 64 cents.
Thank you, sir, I seek a motion, please. Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? All right, thank you, it passes five, oh. Thank you. Ms. Ham?
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is item number 17, presented by District 4 Commissioner Mr. Henderson. Randy Connor, Special Projects Coordinator of the City of Covington. District 4 Commissioner J.C. Henderson is requesting support in seeking funding for development of trails from the City of Covington and joint funding with Newton County. Trails from Nelson Heights Community Center to Central Park, Walker Bend, Washington Street Community Center, and possibly further. Budgeted at this time, no.
Well, first of all, it's not seeking funding, it's the, the ability to apply for grants. This is something that Ren and I, we had talked about. Well, just let me say this, we are at our strongest when we work together, when we work with the City of Covington, when we work with the town of Oxford, when we work with the town of Portidale, Newbin, Mansfield. We're at our strongest. We want to run trails, look for grants. I think it's more Mr. Connor, Randy, looking for grants than me or the county, because that's what he has done for years for the City of Covington. And we, we had thought, along with Anthony Henderson, City Councilman, how much better would it be if we could find money and run these trails that would connect up to Washington Street, that connect, that could be, find money to connect up to Walker's Bend, Portidale, Central Park, here in Covington, and take advantage of, I think, what we, what they had built and we approved of Washington Street, the basketball court, the new basketball court they're putting together. I think most of the funding came from the hotel motel tax. And so we wanted to opt the ability, work with the City of Covington, it can be presented to the City of Covington as well, to work together, to apply for grants. And once we receive the grants, we'll come back to the Board of Commissioners and to the City Council before we, before he would, or we would together and proceed with the project. And I just say one thing, it doesn't, it doesn't cost us a cent. It just, we wanted to make our communities a little bit better. It won't take years if we could find some funding to run a trail. It could be done within a matter of a shorter period of time than what it probably would take us to, to approve some monies that Commissioner Sanders had got from Hank Johnson to do what we're supposed to be doing. So I think that's a good, that's a good opportunity. And what we basically is, is asking, and I'm asking Patrick, do, make it in form of a motion or just in order for us to look at it and maybe hopefully come aboard on it?
I, I think, I mean, you could, it could be a motion to authorize. I would, I would recommend that if you want to do a motion, it'd be a motion to direct the county manager to work with the City of Covington to identify funding opportunities for the trail system that you've identified.
So moved, as stated by the county attorney.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, Patrick, will we need a, to get that done, we need an IGA?
It would depend on the nature of the funding, but possibly, probably so, but you don't need one right now. I mean, all, all you're going to be doing right now is, is Mr. Cooper and his staff are going to work with city staff to see what's out there. And when they identify what's out there, depending on the nature of the funding, you may need an IGA, it may be one, one jurisdiction or the other, and it'll likely have to come back to the board for authorization then.
Absolutely.
And Patrick, also a MOU will be involved.
It would, yeah, one or the other, depending on the nature of the funding. I think, I think to approve, to decide that now is probably putting your cart before your horse.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five, oh. Thank you. Next is item number 18, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to allow citizens to make comments. You may come at this time, please, state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
And welcome to our county manager.
And welcome to our county manager. My concern today is, matter of fact, my question today is to ask, why don't we have an attorney that is in-house? That way, all the money wouldn't be going out into fees, and we could save money. This would also apply if we could have an in-house grant writer. Going forward, if we know who make these decisions, we could better understand. We, the community, is unaware of this knowledge. It would make a great difference if we knew the process, because we are now at the end. If maybe the search for an attorney could have taken place six months ago, we wouldn't be at the place where we are now, and it certainly would make a tremendous difference. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you state your name and address?
My name is Rosie Crawford of Covington, Georgia.
Thank you so much.
Sorry.
My name is Tanisha Daly. Um, I live in Covington, three zero zero one six, zip code.
Thank you.
Um, this is my first time here, and I want to ask a question, because I've noticed that money is only being spent on one side of Covington. Three zero zero one six, from what I've seen, has been neglected. It's dilapidated, it's dirty, it's like it's turning into a whole ghetto. Why? Because I don't see any investment, I don't see the roads being fixed. You have craters that have been there for years, and no improvement. I am disgusted. I am disgusted. I just moved, I moved here in 2012, and I've been watching other areas in Covington develop, and there's nothing being done on that side. And it has been that way for some time now, right? Also, from what I've been seeing, sitting back there, it's like there's no unity among you guys here. It's like, these things that you are bringing up here, they're, your money can be spent somewhere else in Covington that it's needed. Spend it on our youths, spend it in our, spend it in our black communities, because from what I see, the areas in Covington that are being developed and where the money is being spent is predominantly white. This is America. We know the history of this country, and if anybody hasn't spoken about it, I will. I think they're redlining three zero zero one six. You can check it, you can drive over there and look at the difference. Three zero zero one four looks totally different from three zero zero one six, and that happens to be predominantly black. It's not you guys sitting up here, it's not about wearing fancy suits or pretty dresses. It's about getting the work done. And we want to see some work in, in Covington. We want to see improvements, or else guess what we're going to do? I know, I personally, I'm going to start reaching out to the media. CNN is going to come over here and do a story, because we want to see a better three zero zero one six, not just three zero zero one four.
Thank you.
Okay, one day I'm going to come here and I'm not going to be speaking, but there's a lot to deal with. Um, and then Austin, again, earlier I spoke about lack of fiscal responsibility by neglecting to hire an in-house grant writer. After hearing the explanation of Ms. Shannon in the interest of transparency, I would want to know how much money attained in grants and how many programs are being run by iParametrics. Are other counties our size getting the same results while spending less money? On the matter of a lack of an in-house attorney, this is yet another example of what appears to be poor decision-making and a lack of fiscal transparency. And I have no problem with Mr. Jogglider, Jogsetter, um, or Jared Davis Law Firm, but we're spending an inordinate amount of money on legal fees. Maybe some of that money could go toward lowering school taxes that residents are paying. I bet we could even raise the salary significantly for an in-house attorney and still come out ahead. It is said that we are currently paying more than four times that we were paying, when we were paying for an in-house attorney. There's no reason why we do not have one. The contract ends, um, June first. It's clearly too late to hire an in-house attorney at this point. The question really is, why was this process not started more than six months ago? There are questions that our county citizens, these are questions that our county citizens deserve to know.
My name is Nicky Church. I reside at one oh five Ascot Trace in the Handley Mills subdivision. Um, we have been informed that there is a proposed one hundred and forty new homes to be built in our subdivision over a period of time. We currently have one entryway into the subdivision and one, uh, entryway out, uh, exit out. So we have quite a bit of concern about, God forbid, if we ever have a fire, how would residents get out safely with one way in and one way out? Our subdivision sits right off on two twelve. Two twelve runs, I think, maybe about four miles or so, I'm not sure. It's an enormously busy state highway. Uh, people drive seventy, eighty miles an hour. So when we're coming into our subdivision, it's already currently can be challenging, given, you know, the traffic going both ways. So, um, thinking ahead, we're really concerned about, once the full development of these homes are there, you know, being able to get in and get out, especially during rush hour in the morning. We have several school buses coming in as early as six-thirty, eight a.m. in the morning, and then several times in the afternoon. I have been in communication with Mr. Edwards, who is the commissioner for our, our area, and, um, I have been told he's looking into the matter, and we're very, very grateful for that. Um, I have another one of our residents here. Several people also wanted to be here, but because we just found out today that the meeting was tonight, um, they couldn't rearrange their schedules. But, uh, we really have a concern about the new builder, um, currently we're told not having any, um, you know, proposal to do anything about putting in an additional way in or out. We're hoping that that can be something that can be reconsidered, given, um, our concern for safety for the families in the Handley Mills subdivision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
My name is Denise Durant, and I'm a homeowner in Handley Mills, exactly where Nicky Church is, and I do have some concerns. Um, I just recently moved, I'm a year here from, from New Jersey. I love where I am. The only problem I have, and what I observed, is because of the one way in and one way out, where the, the demarcations are not there so clear, what happens when you're coming out of, of, of my street and you make that, um, that left, all right? There can be vehicles blocking, um, the street, where it's the, it's the island and there's a gap. So what I have to do is detour, come into that island, come out, and go against the traffic. And to me, it's a problem, much as when we have a hundred and forty houses being built in the near future. What happens when there's a fire? What happens when there's a catastrophe? So that is my concern, and just wanted to let you know what will be done to deviate or reduce that, that, that risk.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Archie Shepard, District Four, Covington, Georgia. We as concerned citizens have a right to speak up when we feel that money's being wasted in this county. And one of the, one of the things we feel that, uh, being wasted is with the present law firm that's representing Newton County. You had an opportunity today, you had plenty of time to, uh, try to get a new attorney, in-house attorney. One of the things I feel like, with the previous attorney we had, if we had have had him, we never would have had all these lawsuits. You don't have any insurance now because you got pole, uh, you got pole, uh, pole law firm, I mean, represented, this is not personally, but we feel like the, uh, Attorney Patrick is, is letting lots of stuff happen, and the reason you're in this spot now is because you have, you, you didn't have a, an in-house attorney. We feel like, you know, you're not concerned because you have three commissioners, and they running the county. It regards to what we, we, the citizen want, they don't consider what we want. They doing what they want. And it's time for us to make a change here in Newton County. There's too much going on in here in Newton County that, that we're not satisfied with. The commissioners not listening at us, they not concerned about us, and the leadership here just doing what they want to do, not what you was elected to do. So, when election time come up, we're going to try to make some changes, because you are not listening to us, you're not listening to the people that put you in office, you're doing what you want to do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening.
Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two, Covington. Uh, I guess maybe I've got some announcements-like things that I need to put over your hearing. Uh, but, May the twenty-fifth, uh, six o'clock, Mr. Henderson had asked me to try to have a town hall meeting out at Good Hope Baptist Church at six o'clock with Mr. Right here, right? Okay. Oh, Mr. Cowan, right? Y'all going to be able to make it? I got worried the other day that, uh, the groundbreaking ceremony was going to be for the Spring Hill Par. I, I didn't get the time on that. Can somebody give me the time?
I'm not sure exactly what time it will, but we will definitely let you know.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, good enough. Okay, uh, on the, also on the twenty-ninth of May, the American Legion Post Thirty-two will be observing the, our annual Memorial Day service on the square at ten o'clock. And, you know that I am, I have been for the last few years, several years, uh, over the cemetery cleanup. We normally try to do this on the King's birthday, usually it's one day, but we don't only do so much, you know? And I'm wondering if there are any, any way that, uh, money could be put in the county budget to maintain, help maintain those cemeteries, uh, during the summer months. At, once we go through it, hey, you know, six months later, it's, it's rolled up. So maybe if some money was appropriated, maybe we could hire someone on the outside to cut that grass and everything. I think you, you saw one last week, right? So, I mean, we, we did what we could do there, but now it's, you probably rolled up again. So, you know, if, if anything could be done there, I, I certainly would appreciate it. I mean, you know, I'm not getting any younger, and I'm not going to be able to keep doing this, but I'll do it as long as I can. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Stella Manali from Covington. I just want to ask y'all a question. Since y'all are going to give the business fifty thousand, why can't you vote on to give the senior citizens at least forty? Why can't you give them applications to fill out? Why can't you put an office here for the people to come? And if you give them an application, and once they bring in everything they need to bring in, and they bring the application, if something has been did wrong, then they could explain it, get it corrected, then nobody would have to call anything fraud, nobody would go to jail for anything. So, it's really about the senior citizens. So, that's all I'm asking y'all to do. We know it's supposed to start June the first, which originally was supposed to start May the fifteenth. So that's all I'm asking, to think about the senior citizens that need home improvements, and they can't afford it, because if the government shut down, they won't get their check next month. So if y'all could please just think about us sometime, you know, and give the senior citizens at least forty, and give them some applications that they can get filled out, because a lot of people don't have computers, they don't have nobody to help them. So if you give them the application, they can get the application filled out, whatever they don't understand, you put an office in this building, and they can come, and they can get the help they truly deserve. Thank y'all, y'all be safe going home tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Miss Chairman. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our new county manager, Mr. Cooper. Look forward to working with you, Mr. Cooper, you got your hands full, so. Uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, I checked on Poplar Hill A.M.E. when I was down there Sunday Before Last for their anniversary, and there, the, the debris piles aren't there. Um, I thought, I was looking, I'll talk to you afterwards, but, but. Um, but, um, I, I had talking, I had talking, I had spoken earlier with, with, uh, the young lady, Ms., Ms. Daly, and her and I had a, an extended conversation about, um, some of the trash we see around the county, and you've heard me, I haven't spoken on it in a while, but you've heard me talk about it before, is, you know, I, I, we, we can't, as citizens or as board members, we can't stop people from riding down the road and throwing a bag of McDonald's garbage out of their sunroof. Um, we, and we can try to clean that up at some point, but, and, and she and I were having a conversation about how do we, how do we make, how do we urge citizens to be more accountable with trash? And you get down close to where I live, uh, and you get near one of the, the, the drop-off sites for trash, and the closer you get, the worse it gets. And I don't know how to fix it. Um, uh, the track, the trash is still an issue, but at some point, we as citizens, myself, we have to take personal responsibility and have more pride in our community. So, that's what I'm going to urge, that's going to be my, uh, my point of pride comment this week, right? So, um, I just wanted to pass that along, and, and I thank you, Ms. Daly, for your comments. Thank you, Miss Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to, I'm excited to announce that I was appointed to Local Progress. Local Progress is a movement of local elected officials, senators, state reps, congressmen, and, and also local positions, and we all come together to fight for equality and create policies. And I was also granted a scholarship, um, to attend their conveying, which will be in September. So it's an honor to be a part of that with other major elected officials in, across the United States, and talk about housing and so forth, and equality in our criminal justice system, justice system reform, and to create policies to make sure that the local level is prospering. So I'm honored to be a part of that. Thank you so much for that, Local Progress. Um, we speak of the youth, we speak of being elected officials. One thing I said when I stepped into this position, I said, for one, I wasn't going to be that elected official that you only see during election time. I didn't want to be that elected official that's knocking at your door or don't answer your call. That was the first thing I said. I also stated that I want to be that elected official, when you ask me to do something, I do it because I'm representing youth. One of the things they, that you all said in my district, I can state, was that, what is in place for our youth and our seniors? There's nothing. So as we can see, nothing has been done in place for our youth and our seniors. We have a youth facility, we have funding for a youth facility, four million dollars in place, we have possibly eight- We have possibly eight, four million dollars in place to, for grant, grant funding. We also have sidewalk money for sidewalks in regards to that. That's for our youth. But we want to say that we're elected officials sitting here fighting for the community, but we not doing what the community asks us to do. That's a problem for me. I don't sit up here just because I just want to look cute in my fedora's. I love my hats. But I'm not up here for that reason. I'm up here fighting for a community. And that's why you see me fighting community. It's time to stop. Out every time I say something, certain commissioners, they have to say something. It's ridiculous. It's completely ridiculous. Every commissioner on this board has an opinion. Yes, we do, because we're adults. And if we mature enough, we can take those opinions and listen to them instead of attacking each other. Not once tonight did I attack anyone individually, but there had to be an opening for someone to try to attack me, and it's getting sickening. It's getting really sickening, especially being the only female on this board. It's getting sickening, and it's ridiculous. I'm not up here to fight with none of y'all on this board. I'm up here to serve a community. And that's what I'm gonna do from day one until God allows me to stay in this position. I'm gonna fight for my community, the youth, the seniors, and whatever I'm supposed to do, and my vote is gonna be ethical. If something is not right, I will not vote for it. And I will speak for it if it's not right. If we're not doing the right thing up here, I will speak out. I'm not just gonna be a little butterfly sitting right here, or just a woman just being quiet. You got the wrong female sitting up here. If you want that, you gotta put somebody else in place, because I'm gonna speak up about what's happening in this community. And it's ridiculous. And we have to stop it, because it's starting to be immature. We have to do better. We have to do better. I will start with myself. I even went up to a commissioner and asked him, what do you want me to do? What do I need to do to change for you? That's called maturity. And if we keep doing the same thing over and over, the citizens are gonna constantly see us fighting up here for no reason, and nothing's been done. Yes, I live on the west side. I see certain sides being cleaner than on my side of town. I actually live in this community, and it's ridiculous. I have said that since I've been in office, that why the west side of Newton County looks dirty, and it needs to stop. We gotta do better in this county. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cowan. Let me work this, I got this, I got this. Commissioner Cowan. Commissioner Cowan, you have anything?
I usually don't say much. One thing, I guess that caught my attention was the issue of having an in-house attorney.
We'll have a chairman if you want to.
We looked for nearly two years trying to get a in-house attorney. Quite frankly, nobody was interested. I don't know why. But even me, I practice law myself, and I wouldn't be, I wouldn't do what Patrick does, even though I've got experience in trial, I've got experience in employment, workers' compensation, government, open records, all that stuff. I've done it, and quite frankly, I'm sick of it. I appreciate Patrick doing what he does. I appreciate Gerard Davis handling a most difficult situation that we came into. But again, we have looked for in-house attorney. That ad ran for nearly two years, that I'm aware of. Couldn't get nobody. I think that, I think it comes across that government itself is difficult, and it's, it's very challenging to do that, especially having to keep your client straight. And I think that would be a big challenge here in Newton County. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to take this opportunity to welcome Mr. Harold Cooper to the position of county manager. Definitely looking forward to working with you to bring some innovative ideas that's gonna really help take our community to the next level and to be able to help this board move forward in doing the work of the community. I also had a resident reach out to me. Ms. Leslie Henderson reached out to me today. She is hosting the Atlanta Masters Classic and CareSource Health Fair on June the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from nine AM to three PM. She has events starting as early as seven forty-five AM for yoga and meditation. This health fair will be health and wellness vendors. There's a free street parking workout, and this is gonna take place at Savage Society CrossFit, one four five zero zero Lock Ridge Boulevard, Suite E, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one four. And so she was asking me to make sure that the community knows that she was actually having this event through Atlanta Masters Classic and CareSource Health Fair on June the seventeenth from nine AM to three PM, and then she'll have yoga starting at seven forty-five AM. I know we are a community that enjoys health and wellness. And so when she reached out to me, I told her I would make sure that, I would make this known to our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. C. I just wanted to invite everybody out to Sam two hundred Last Street. You know, and I heard my colleague, Commissioner says, what do we do? Just start with the children. You got to kind of encourage them and mold them in a way that they don't want, when they get grown, like me, throw trash on the road. You want to show them what they should do and help them. Now, you know, and I know it's been a little bit, some in the paper about, so they cutting Nelson Heights funding. Well, they cutting Nelson Heights funding a year ago. And because of the citizens of Newton County, the citizens of Newton County, Nelson Heights, Green Acres, Sand Hill, and all down the line, they came and used the building more because they wanted to keep their building for their children. And we actually paid the light bill. The light bill was not in J.C. Henderson's name or Anthony Henderson's name. The light bill was in Recreation Department. So those, those bills that we were paying was bill that the county should have paid anyway. But I think my good, my colleague, running guy, he said, well, they at least pay the bills. And that's where it came from, about the funding. But if you're gonna help the children change their minds, then you're gonna have to start with the young kids. And we need to do something about this gun law, because a lot of them is throwing a lot of guns around. And as, as Mr. Johnson said, about the town hall meeting, twenty-fifth of May, six PM, at Good Hope, and I still, I'm still mourning the loss of Pastor Thomas. He was one of the greatest men that I knew in my life and over years that I have stood on this board. In fact, he stood up for me in his same horseshoe, him and Pastor, Heska Beller, back when he was preaching over at Bethlehem. So what I'm saying is this, y'all. We have got to come together, not fight one another. Stop and help our youth. We gonna build that for the whole month? We gonna open the doors up at Nelson Heights? If I had to stand out there myself and watch the kids, and believe me, I'd do it, because I just where I was raised. And let's stop trying to talk about one another, let's help one another. Because I believe, and I may be wrong, if somebody hit me, more preaching in this old deacon. God create, created us the same, and he loves all of us, and we should be acting the way that we act. Thank you, Ms. C.
Thanks, sir. Jeff, Jeff Prime. Is there a need for executive session? I thought so. Land acquisition? Guys, I seek a motion that we move into executive session. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor?